Okay. The last case on our agenda tonight is case 11, 11B. This is at 9:11:13, West Dimpson Avenue, Three White Entertainment is the appellant. The appellant is requesting an administrative review by the Board regarding the decision of his own administrator to deny establishment of an adult theater, an adult entertainment business, or an adult nightclub at the reference location. So, Mr. Eschenbacher, can you bring us up to speed?
Mr. Wang, go ahead.
Okay. Thanks.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name's Pat Lang and I'm the City Law Director. And I'd love to be able to tell you that this is just another case like any other before the Board, obviously, that's not entirely accurate. This is a case with a litigation past, a litigation present, and a, quite possibly, a litigation future as well. On that note, before we get into consideration of the case, I do want to bring you up to speed on some very late-breaking developments. And while the city has not yet been formally served with a complaint, it has come to our attention that a lawsuit was filed today by Mr. Stotts and Mr. Procos against the City of Athens, against former Code Director Steve Pearson, and several current and former members of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, without going into a lot of detail here in this public forum about the case, the lawsuit alleges that the BZA violated plaintiff's First Amendment rights and that plaintiff suffered damages as a result, speaking back at the hearing in 2008 when this was last voted upon. First and most importantly, I just want to advise you to relax. And I know it's easy for me to stand up here and say that, but the timing of this case speaks for itself. And understand that as members of the BZA that you enjoy, you know, immunity from, you know, the votes that you cast, from the discretionary actions that you take as a board. Otherwise, we would never be able to get anybody to serve on board if you could be punished for the votes that you cast. So, understand that first and foremost. And understand also that, you know, we've got your back on this. The city, this is at heart a dispute between the plaintiffs and between the city, and the city will defend you. That said, second, don't be intimidated in any way by filing of this lawsuit. Don't let it affect your consideration of tonight's case one iota. Just set it aside and deal with this case strictly on the merits. Now, I'm not going to be taking any specific questions about the lawsuit. Again, this being a public forum here tonight, although I will certainly be happy to speak with any of you individually should you wish to have a conversation about where that case goes from here. On the case at hand, I believe each of you should have received a memo from me in the past couple of weeks which outlined the law to be applied to this application. To review that, just very briefly, the question before the Board is an extremely narrow one. First, does this application fit into one of the categories of a permitted use for this zone? If it does, then the applicants are entitled to a permit. If it does not, then this Board must decide whether the application is of the same general character of other allowed uses. And again, if it is, then the applicants are entitled to a permit. If it is not, then they are not. And I must remind you, as I did three years ago, that this is not a case about whether you like strip clubs or don't like strip clubs or anything like that. You may not deny a permit on the grounds that you disagree with any First Amendment protected speech or conduct that is proposed to take place at this establishment. The question before the Board is an extremely narrow one, and I just urge you to please just focus like a laser on that question and don't get sidetracked on anything else. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
We will...
I'm going to take a seat right over there so if anything comes up, if I'm needed, then I won't have to come back up here.
Okay. Undoubtedly, we will call you back, or maybe with whatever we want. We'll see. Okay. Thank you. Let's see who's here to represent this case tonight. We don't have a name, but the applicant will please come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott Mergenthaler. My address is 366 East Broad Street in Columbus, Ohio. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Christopher Stotts and Three White Entertainment. I have a little history that I'd like to give you of the whole process, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
I think that's fine. We have some new members that would be used...
Thank you. I know there's some new members that weren't in the other two hearings, but, um, so I'll try to skip through it as quickly as I can.
Okay.
This whole application process started in December of 2007 with the filing of an application for zoning permit for a proposed use that, and this application was deemed private club slash assembly hall. And the use was described as dancing and entertainment without sale of alcohol with 120 fixed seats on the existing building footprint. And it was assigned a appellate number or a BAZ number of 07-250. That application was filed with the zoning administrator on December 17th of 2007. On January 15th of 2008, then zoning administrator Steve Pearson sent a letter out that said that he's unable to determine the proposed use and whether or not the proposed use is permissible under the Athens zoning code. And he didn't admit it, I mean, he didn't accept it or deny it. He just said he was unable to do that, and so it got to the Board. Now, the reason why I'm bringing this up is you could technically grant this application right now based upon the fact that it wasn't accepted or denied within a 30-day period. I'm not sure what your code reads now, but back then, Section 230602G stated that the zoning administrator had 30 days to act on the application. And acting on the application isn't, I'm not sure what to do with it, you people decided. It goes on to state that it must either issue or deny the application, or that person's entitled to the permit. So, the actual action on the permit wasn't done until almost three, maybe four months later. And so, based upon your zoning code, 230602G, this Board of Zoning Appeals would have a valid reason to deny the permit, or we could even deem by operation of law that that permit's granted. Nevertheless, this matter went to a hearing on March 8th, or March 11th of 2008 in front of this Board, and the zoning permit was denied by unanimous decision. About three days later, on March 14th, 2008, three more applications were filed by the same applicant, and the proposed uses were for an entertainment, for nightclub, and for theater. And then, the description of the proposed use was a little more specific in that it talked about operation of a sexually oriented business, adult cabaret, or adult theater with sexually oriented activity, entertainment activity inside, and then talked about how many seats they intended to have. And it was assigned three separate BZA numbers, 08, 37, 08, 38, 08, 39. The second round of applications, the three that I'm talking about now, were denied by Mr. Pearson in a timely fashion, set before this Board for another hearing, and the all three applications were denied by unanimous vote. According to the zoning code, we filed an administrative appeal to the Court of Common Please on both cases. So, in order to meet our 30-day deadline, I believe it is, we had to file from the March 08 hearing at one point in time, and then from the May 13th hearing, we had to file again. Those cases were subsequently consolidated in front of Judge Ward, and in June of 2010, Judge Ward issued a decision. And that decision served to vacate your denial of the permits and suggested that the matter come back to the Board for rehearing in accordance with what the judge said. And I'm going to spend, you know, a little bit of time explaining to you how I interpret the judge's decision on that, so that, and Pat can chime in, you know, on how he interprets it too. That decision was appealed by the City of Athens to the Court of Appeals. Court of Appeals said Judge Ward did the same thing, or did the right thing, so we are here asking the Court, or asking the Board to essentially decide this case in accordance with Judge Ward's decision. Now, that decision starts off with this maxim of law in that because you are dealing with somebody's property rights, that you must define the permitted use liberally. In other words, if there's the benefit of the doubt in the definition of what a permitted use is in this case, you should resolve that doubt in favor of the property owner and not, you know, in favor of the city. This property on Stimson Avenue is located in a B3 zone. And what I'm told, that's one of the most liberal zones in the city allowing for many different types of activities. But specifically, what we're looking at here is, are these applications principally permitted uses? And in a B3 zone, anything that's allowed in a B2D zone is also allowed in the B3 zone. So, we need to look at the section that defines principally permitted uses in a B2D zone. And if we look at 230406A, you'll see that it specifically allows entertainment as a specifically permitted use in a B2D zone. So, if it's allowed in a B2D zone, it's allowed in a B3 zone pursuant to 230407A. Further, there is no, absolutely no qualifying or limiting language as to what entertainment is. You know, we've been wrapped up about assembly halls and nightclubs and what those all are, but your code does not list those as principally permitted uses in either these zones, but it does permit entertainment. The only qualifier, of course, would be whether or not what goes on in this establishment is lawful. And we've essentially, you know, argued to the Court, well, not too much to the Court, but argued to the BZA before, that this type of activity, which will be partially clad, perhaps nude women dancing, is constitutionally protected speech, and I think Mr. Lang would also agree with me on that point. Clearly, this proposed use is entertainment. And when Mr. Lang says, "Narrow your search," I think this is, this is what I want you to do, I am sure Mr. Lang wants you to do this too. You need to decide whether or not this proposed use consists of entertainment, and that's as easy as it is. If you want to get into whether it's a nightclub, a assembly hall, a theater, feel free to do that. All those things are entertainment too. So, I think the gist of the inquiry is, is it entertainment? We submit that it is. I don't know how anybody can decide otherwise, but that's your province. The alternate inquiry is in Section A12 of 230407. And basically, what it says is, "Any other use which is determined by the BZA to be of the same general character of the above permitted uses." So, what that requires you to do is look at all the other principally permitted uses that are in 230407 and decide whether or not this use, this entertainment use, is similar to those that are set forth in there. Judge Ward said, "You don't need to look on Stimson Avenue and decide, are there any other strip clubs there? Will it fit into that area? Is it good for the community?" None of that. Okay? That's the province of City Council. And City Council did not, unfortunately, for perhaps people in the city that don't want this establishment here, City Council did not act on that in time. So, City Council said, "You're allowed to have entertainment in B3." We filed our applications. We feel that, according to Judge Ward's decision and any reasonable interpretation of zoning code, that these applications should be granted today. So, it's not your province to determine what's appropriate on Stimson Avenue. It's not your province to determine whether or not, like I said, that this is similar to any other uses on Stimson Avenue or in that area, merely to decide whether or not this use is entertainment. And one of our applications that was assigned number 08-038 specifically called for proposed use of entertainment, and it would seem that that would be the most likely application to grant in that direction. So, having said all that, are there any questions that I can field from the Board at this time?
I have a question. I've just been confused by this, it's the adult theater or adult entertainment business or nightclub? I don't understand why there are three different types of use being...
Oh, I can, you know, I can really answer that question for you. And after we filed the third, the second round of applications, okay, the city enacted adult education, or adult entertainment, sexual oriented business legislation, okay? And they use those terms pretty much interchangeably, I think. And so, we wanted to be able to use language that the city would understand, in the city's own language. But, you know, there are people here that can answer questions about what they intend the business to be like. I mean, you know, they, their intentions are to run a lawful establishment, an establishment that's secure, that has off-duty police officers there, that's clean, and fully complies with the Ohio Advice Code and any other criminal-type regulations that may be a part of the City of Athens.
So, the idea is that the proposed business would fall under at least one of these?
Yes.
Okay.
Really, if not all.
Okay.
I'm not sure there's a real distinction.
You mentioned that potentially you have 120 seats in there, right? Is it fair to assume that possibly there would be 120 individuals with 120 cars be arriving for, at any given time?
Well, I think in the first application, we requested 120. We had 120. The next one, we had 180. And, I mean, you know, I have a daughter that went here to school for seven years, okay? And I know there, at least from my standpoint, there wasn't a whole lot of driving around that goes on here. You know, there's a lot of kids walking and, you know, to these establishments, and that's what we would anticipate. But, in my review of the code back then, I think it deals with the issue of seating. And it talks about if you have an assembly hall without fixed seats, you need like one parking space for every 100 square foot of floor. If you have one with fixed seats, you need one for every six seats. So, if we apply that, one for every six seats, we would need 30 seats if we ever put 180 in there, or 30 parking spaces, I'm sorry. And there's over 50 parking spaces available on that spot.
I'd also like to add that what we're discussing here tonight is simply if they're allowed the use. If, at the end of the meeting, they are granted the use, or if you guys interpret that the use is allowed in a B3 zone, then they can submit their use permit application, and then, as a separate issue, they would, of course, have to meet all specifications and ball controls and all minimum standards for that business.
We will, no doubt, have you back at the podium again, but we, I think, are up to date on how this all came about, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to briefly respond to a couple of points, just so that we're all clear here, and thank Mr. Mergenthaler for that, for his thoughts and for giving some history on that, of course. Again, I think, did anyone not get the memo from me on this? I don't think so. Everyone had a little bit of the history of that. Just a few points that I'd like to briefly address that Mr. Mergenthaler brought up. And that, the first one is, and we argued this point in front of the Court of Appeals, and so I think we both are familiar that we just have a disagreement on this, and that is the question of whether entertainment in and of itself is, you know, does that mean any kind of entertainment in the world, you know, fits in? You know, the city's position on this has been that the fact that after the word entertainment, it says nightclubs, theaters, billiard parlors, pool halls, bowling alleys, these are clearly words of limitation, because otherwise, as I argued in front of the Court of Appeals, you could put a roller coaster in. You could have a, you know, an entertainment or just a giant, you know, amusement park. So, clearly, that would clearly be an absurd result. So, that is just an area that we just don't agree on, whether entertainment in and of itself is a permissible use, or whether it's limited by the words that fell. I would agree with Mr. Mergenthaler and his, when he was talking about the same general character, and again, this is addressed in the memo as well, but just the fact that what we're looking at when we're asking that question about same general character, we're not saying, is it in the same general character of what is in the neighborhood right now? We're asking as to whether it's the same general character as to other allowed uses under that section of the code. And then, I guess, just finally, I'd want to make sure to point out that in Judge Ward's decision, he vacated the Board's earlier ruling and basically said, "You've got to, you've got to do it over again." He did not give any direction as to having to rule one way or the other, and that's something that Judge Ward could have done in his decision, is to say, "We demand," you know, that the Court orders you to grant the permit. And he did not do that in this case. He simply said that there needs to be a rehearing. So, I just wanted to clear those points up.
Thank you very much. That's helpful. Questions for Mr. Lang at this moment? Okay. Is anyone who wishes to speak agreement with this review, this proposal from Mr. Mergenthaler? Mr. Procos? Yes. And will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Take me 725 up here. Yep. Most of you probably know me. I'm doing business at 88 East State Street. I've been in town for, we're doing business since 1983. We have done several businesses from video stores and real estate. The issue here, it is very difficult to all of us. It's not questioned that nobody wants to deal with that issue. It's been tossed around from the code office to you guys. You guys were complaining on the previous meetings that you haven't done that before. Why they send it to you now? It was an argument among yourselves, not the new members, the old members. If you're supposed to even hear in that case. And in hearing of that case, you took the variance book out, and you say, "I know it's no variance, but I'm going to, let's talk about if it was a variance." Well, this is not anything else except a simple thing. And let's talk a little bit about the history of that building, because it's very important for the citizens of Athens to know, and some of you that you knew on this Board. This building, I purchased it in, I don't remember when I purchased it, it was late, early 90s, late 80s. The very first thing I'd done when I purchased the building was looking horrible. Looks like now, you have to see it then. I'm sorry I don't have a bigger picture, because that was one back then was a 35-meter case. And that building, if I can approach...
Just pass it down the road.
Because look, it had, the face of that building had six different colors on it. It was divided in search, the top had different color than the bottom did. The first thing we did, we budgeted $150,000 to improve the building. The very first thing we thought good to do, to be nice for the building, there was just a break, that was fell apart with cracks, fix the cracks, and stucco the building, meaning put stucco on the front and on the back of the building. While we were in the process of putting, I'm sorry, I only have, I think, five pictures, so maybe, oh, you know what?
We can share.
And then, we turned the building to something like that. That was what we were, what it looks like now, basically. And we were to go farther. We were to put ceramic tile on the front. We were to have arches, were to make it look like a little Mediterranean shopping center. The city sued us. The city said, "You cannot have put stucco on your building unless you have a permit from us." And if you don't take down the stucco, you're going to, we're going to find you $500 for each day that you're keeping your stock, the stock on your wall. The city wanted to put the building back the way it was. I fought the city. We have depositions. We have attorneys. 8:30 in the morning, six months later, the day of the court, the city dropped the case because they were bluffing, and they, they knew, and I wasn't backing out. And 8:30 in the morning, before they go in the court, that they knew they were going to lose it, they back off from that. Okay? Then I said, "You know what? I cannot go against the law. I can take my remaining of the $150,000, and I can enjoy my estate, fight the city." Okay? So, guess what? I bought me a sale boat, and I enjoy the rest of the summer. And we had a lot of fun. Some of you are fans of the laughing right now with that boat. Then, a lady came from, new to you, the new to you was doing other business. They asked me if I can help them, and as a businessman, because I knew her, she knew me before, and I said, "Well, the very first issue you have is your location." They were in, I don't want to name what business, what part, but some of you might know, very close to Stimson, they were on Street of Stimson Avenue, and, but they wouldn't look back. They didn't have a visibility. I said, "You need a good location." She talked about the people, then she comes back and says, "Will you rent us a place? You have a place that we think has a good visibility." And I says, "Well, I'm asking, it's too much." They're going rating nothing. Back then, it was, I think, $11 or $12 per square foot on a commercial property, and knowing their numbers, because they had said it with me, I knew they couldn't afford it. But then I went home, talked with Holly, my wife now, not wife then, it was my girlfriend then, and we agreed that, you know, it is for a good cause and not just running to them beyond the, the minimum wage or the going rates in Athens, but let's commit to them in donation, so they can make it. During the time that these people were there, new to you, they started with one third of our building, then they move, they were asking us to, they wanted more space. We closed the video store, and we gave them that space. Then, when the tenant moved out of, on the third part of the building, the final third part of the building, we rented that space. The rent wasn't increasing as much, of course it was increasing, they went three times the size. But on top of that, from 1997 to 2007, we donated to Foster Parents Association almost $500,000. We were doing every month, on the end, $4,000. We started with smaller, and on the end, we're doing it. And we were, and then, the time came that they were looking to go someplace else. When that time came, I told them, "Shut up, we'll rebuild the building and rent it again. I will continue with the donation." I don't, I wasn't promising going to be more, or the same, or less, but I knew money from that building again going to go to the cause. The cause was, for personal reasons, close to me, the Foster Parents Association had reasons to want to support it. That doesn't have to do anything, except for you guys to keep in mind that this donation is lost, three jobs have been lost from that building during the years that I'm hearing nose. And let's go through the nose.
Well, I think perhaps Mr. Mergenthaler has already addressed the nose, so unless you have something to tell us different about the nose that we produced for you, we should probably move on.
Well, it's kind of important, because some issues was bringing up, including Mr. Lang's statement about the timing on the lawsuit. So, there are a few things that we need to address here, because the statement's already been made.
Okay. If you think it's something we have not heard already tonight, go right ahead. If you think it's something we have not heard already tonight, go right ahead.
Well, I don't know. You see, I've been here three times.
Right.
Some of you wasn't on the board then.
That's right.
And a lot of the citizens were hearing that because that's going on for four years ago.
Right.
A lot of the citizens on TV, they probably.
Well, I think your attorney has gone through that.
It's not my attorney.
Two thousand, well, Mrs. Stott's attorney has gone through 2007, 2008, as we, Steve Pearson's decision, then it's coming to us, then it's being refused, then it's coming back, then it's being refused. So.
Do you want to skip the history then?
Unless you have something new, I think we all understand the history since it's been given tonight. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there something new you wanted specifically to tell us?
Well, I think, how you know what you know if you.
Well, again, I don't mean to cut you off, but I, you know, we have, we have heard already. So anything new that you want to tell us?
We have already about the designs to put apartments on the building, on that building.
I think we have not heard that tonight, but I'm not sure that that's relevant tonight. I mean, the previous emails are certainly part of the history.
Very quickly.
Okay.
Here, there are some pictures of what we tried to do. I'm going to make that very quickly, two minutes. Okay? We took the comprehensive plan when the New To You moved out and we went according to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan says things like future building from building height. And under this paragraph, which is on page 29, says building height could step towards away from the street from it and not to be equal along the full building footprint. We designed a building to do exactly that. Okay? Then we're talking about future building form, setback and siding. New building and renovations should include efforts to build no more than five feet away from the right of the line. In other words, buildings should be pulled forward towards the street. We done that.
Okay.
Okay? Then they talk in future building, building faces, facades and visible building sites should include a multiple construction material. We done that.
Right.
We came to the city. The city says, oh, guess what? By the way, that was a second set of drawings by a new architect. And the city says, guess what? Now we have new rules. You cannot, you don't have enough parking because you have to put grass in your place. So I say, well, okay, I'm going to redesign the building, but I don't have the room. Can I put the grass on the tap and put a green building? So we redesigned that. Okay? I don't have to keep on showing you pictures. We redesigned that. And what you want? This building. Okay?
Okay.
This building was not good enough because the people in the city or the right authorities or the, whoever I was talking to, they did not know about the green buildings. So we had the company that designs green buildings and knows, had done studies about, to come to a hotel to do a demonstration and, you know, with slides and all that. Guess what? Nobody from the city came. Nobody from the planning commission, nobody did. Okay? So the city turned it down on all my efforts to build something.
I'd like to comment that there's never been an application made in regards to these projects that he's talking about. He has come in and discussed them with us, but there has been never a formal application. We have not had a floor plan. We have not had a site plan. Just these renderings and that's not, we can't make a decision off of that.
No, what we can add to that, and he, Mr. John Israel, there was never been an application because I had spent $50,000 in architects, kept on changing the drawings to meet the city, and then I never got any encouragement. In fact, I had a lot of promises and a lot of lip service, lip service, that nobody, that they're going to come and we talk about this.
So I think what you're trying to tell us is that you have wanted to do other things with this building.
Yes, I think what I'm trying to say, and thank you for helping there. What I was trying to tell you is that my tax dollars but paid for this comprehensive plan. I came up with something that meets the comprehension time, time after time after time, and I got turned down. When I got them down, then I get the comprehensive plan, says, let me see what I can put on this building. And we went to Tim Hortons, we went to Chuck E. Cheese, we went to sports bars, and we got one of each. We got in Hortons that want to rent from us. Guess what? When we went again to the court office, the court office says, oh, no, we cannot let you put a restaurant there because you are within 200 feet, 200 feet from Mar One and you cannot sell food and drinks. I cannot sell food and drinks on Stimson Avenue on B3. Well, really, the only, the only restaurant, the only business between me and the, the Mar One, it is a restaurant.
Yes, we know that.
The cover's been taken out.
I remember, in fact, since I was on the board before, hearing these difficulties that you had and thinking how you were going to use the building. And I think probably from what you told us, it is clearly a difficulty that you had proposing a use for the building that was not what you're proposing now. Okay? So does everybody understand what Mr. Prokos is telling us about the difficulties of proposing a different use for the building? Good. Anything else?
Yes. I did start with a comprehensive plan on the way to the end.
Okay.
When I was turned down by number three of comprehensive, says eating and drinking places, restaurant, cafes specifically, I tried to bring restaurant, I tried to bring cafe, and nothing happened. Then the next thing that says under number five on page 230 says entertainment, nightclubs.
Yeah.
Okay? But before I get there, I was, I tried to bring a business in town that was a retailer. When I went to the court office and I says, the only thing my tenant wants is to pay the lot. The court office, Mr. Pearson told me, well, if you pay any more than 25% of your lot, you have to put a grass area. And if you put a grass area, you don't want to have enough parking left to rent your building.
Okay. I think we do understand.
Okay. Now, let's talk about what's happening today.
Okay. Briefly, can you do it briefly?
Yes. No lawsuit was filed today. A lawsuit was filed yesterday. And the lawsuit was filed yesterday because on May 12th or 20th, I don't remember exactly when, is when the city's appeals was turned down by second time by the court. The court, after four years, for second time said, you, this board, now we can blame everybody else, but this particular board turned it down for the wrong reasons. They can turn it down for something, but the reasons they used was the wrong reasons. Well, meantime, ladies and gentlemen, because of the decision of this board, we apply in 2007, I've been without rents since 2007, and we are now on June 2011. I have 17,000 square foot building in one of the best locations of Athens. I have a $2 million building that you're not paying for it, but you want me to turn it to a park because, because of the grass, I cannot use my building. Now, I have a tenant.
I really think what you're doing now is discussing the lawsuit and we don't have anything really to do with that.
No, I don't. The only thing I was trying to talk about is timing.
Yeah, okay. But we don't need to address that tonight. I mean, I understand that the comment was made and maybe it hit your heart, but it's, that's another issue.
But if your side makes a comment, I cannot respond to it?
No, I think you did.
No, I didn't because I haven't tell you why it took that time. So I would like to say.
I think some other people want to talk, Mr. Prokos. You can maybe come back.
Can I use the time of somebody else?
I don't know about that. But I think we understand that you have had a long series of efforts to think of something that you might do, apartments, I do remember the idea of the apartments and various other things. And many of us who've lived in town a long time know about the New To You and the other things that have been in the building. And we also know that it's now vacant and that that probably has been a hardship for you. So with that, let's let somebody else have a turn.
Okay. Then I need to close by saying the hardship has been created by the city.
Yes.
I had plenty of tenants and the only tenant I have left place is this tenant there, Three White Entertainment. And the Three White Entertainment, I need to say, that is according your comprehensive plan, says entertainment, nightclubs. And if you want to look night, to see what a gentleman's club are, open up the telephone book, and you don't want to find them anywhere else under, except under nightclubs. Now, if there are nightclubs with a difference, that's been made, the comment, the comment was made before, there might be, but there are nightclubs.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else who wishes to speak in agreement? Is there anyone who would like to speak in general comment? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Okay, Mr. Rovner? And since there are several people who are going to speak, will I ask you to speak briefly?
I'm going to be very brief.
That's fine. And for other people who speak, will you try to add something new to what's being said and not be repetitious? Yes, tell us your name and address, please.
My name is Phyllis Rovner and I live at 49 Ohio Avenue, the near east side. And I'm just going to address the B3 issue, and that is entertainment. As a woman and as a resident of the near east side, which is very close to Stimson Avenue, I don't call women semi-clad and naked entertainment.
Thank you.
That's all I want.
Okay. Again, we're not really addressing the content.
I thought that is what you.
Yeah, we just, we just need to see whether it's a form of entertainment and whether it's allowed in the district, and we're not allowed to talk about whether we agree with the nudity or the dancing or the whatever. But thank you.
I don't, I don't, I don't call it.
Okay. You don't call it entertainment. Okay. Who else would like to speak? Anyone else? Mr. Gehrig? Mr. Gehrig first and then you. Please give us your name and address.
Madam Chairwoman, other members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Chris Gehrig with my permanent address here in Athens being 49 Utah Place. I am in your public record from the last hearing, not from personal appearance, but on behalf of the East Elementary PTO, where I wrote as the then president of the organization, raising some concerns about the action you're considering tonight. I'm no longer the president of the PTO and I'm not here in that capacity tonight. I am here as a business owner on Stimson Avenue and also speaking on behalf as general counsel for Hocking Valley Bank. We have a fairly narrow issue for the board, and I saw them in my comments, that which is that we do disagree with the three-wide entertainment position, which is we believe that it is an overly expansive definition of entertainment that's being proposed here tonight. We would ask the board to deny the characterization of it as such and would submit you that it would be a reasonable interpretation not to give permission here tonight. I will certainly field questions if you have any for me, but.
Do you have questions for Mr. Gehrig? Anyone?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please give us your name and address.
My name is Vic Weissenreeder. I'm CEO of Hocking Valley Bank adjacent to the property in question. I reside at 3 Hillcrest Drive here in Athens. And I don't know whether this is in opposition or just a comment, but Mr. Mergenthaller, in his remarks, commented that you need to be mindful of the value of the properties, the property owners and their rights and values. And I would just comment that there's more property values involved here than Mr. Prokos is, and I would ask you to consider the impact on everything, not just that property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone else who wishes to speak? Give us your name and address, please.
I'm Tony Santone, 12 South Court Street. I've been a businessman here since 1979 and I think this should be approved and a lot of jobs will be created.
Okay, thank you. So that's really in favor rather than opposition. Thank you. Is anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Okay. At this point, Mr. Mergenthaller, would you like to come back with comments?
Yes, I do. I just, one thing I want to read into the record, okay? And it's, it is longstanding dispute between Mr. Lang and myself as to the definition of entertainment. And I'm just going to read what it says in your code. Okay? This is directly from 23.0406B-2D-A. It says entertainment, capital E, entertainment, three dashes, capital N, nightclubs, comma theaters, comma billiard parlors, comma pole halls, comma bowling alleys and similar enterprises shall be at least 100 feet from any R-zone. So it says entertainment's allowed, and then it qualifies it by saying that those things that we wrote in the code here should be 100 feet away from an R-zone. And so they're not words of limiting language, limiting entertainment to a nightclub or a billiard hall. What they're saying is, if you're going to have it, we want it 100 feet away from an R-zone. And we are. I mean, we've established that last couple of hearings here, that this is within or outside of that radius. So I just want to make that clear. I want the record to be clear that that's what your code says. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Okay. Anybody got any questions before we close the floor? From Mr. Lang, Mr. Peskey, Mr. Mergenthaller, anyone?
I guess I have a question for Mr. Mergenthaller. So is it your position then that this entertainment as specified in the code is meant to include sexually oriented entertainment as written?
I can't speak for what the Athens Council enacted when it did. So whatever was in their mindset, it could, that could have been in their mindset back then, it could not have been, I don't know. All I know is that you've got a zoning code that they enacted and it says that entertainment's allowed in B3. And that's all you need to determine is whether or not this is entertainment, and if so, it's allowed in B3. Going into the minds of all the councilmen in 1967 or '55 or whenever that happened, I don't think it's your job as a board zoning appeals member.
Thank you. Okay.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Mr. Lang, if I could just follow up on that point, I feel like I'm kind of beating the horse to death at this point. I would agree with Mr. Mergenthaller that we can't get into the minds of, you know, council members at the time that the zoning code was enacted, but again, our reading of entertainment is that it's followed by words of limitation. So it's not just saying that any kind of entertainment under the sun would be applicable here, but I guess we'll just have to agree to disagree on that.
Okay. Mr. Prokos would like to have a last word. I hope it will be brief.
Very good. I believe that the council, the current council had gone over that issue and they realized that they had no intention to stop the adult entertainment when, on the ruling that we were talking right now. And after that, they vote in a law, a new law, that talks about adult entertainment. So therefore, that is a good proof that the council did not, did not include the adult entertainment separate before. Because right after that, on February of 2008, the council made new laws about adult entertainment and said, then, annoying them said, where can you put the adult entertainment businesses?
It's true. It's very clear. They hadn't thought of that before. Thank you so much for reminding us.
I have a question for Mr. Lang.
Okay.
Mr. Lang, there are hundreds of adult entertainments, let's say in big cities like Columbus, and there are that many different types of adult entertainment. Can we ask what would be a typical activity that will take place during any of the shows or, you know, any of the programs that they have? What exactly happens? What is the nature of?
I think we do know that, and I think that's something that we're not supposed to address because it addresses the nature of the club. We know what the club is. It's, it's a strip club where there's pole dancing. And so I think I understand that. that's the primary activity.
I would like to know any questions in terms of, on the application and any specifics, I guess, to the code office.
Right. So we certainly know that it's, they indicated that it's a sexually oriented club. So, okay, so let's close the floor.
I would like to comment on one of the items that Mr. Mergenthaler brought up and that's about the 30-day timeframe that I do believe that Mr. Pearson acted in a timely manner. It was within 30 days that he did either approve, deny, request for a substitution as we've done before, or an interpretation or whatever it may be. So therefore, it's my opinion that he did respond within the timeframe that was applied in the code at that time.
All right.
But in any case, it wouldn't be up to us to remedy that?
Well, and the other part of it is I feel that Mr. Ashenbacher already touched on it, their application was sort of searching for an interpretation because I've searched through stuff and I've yet to find a complete site plan of what they want to do, the parking layout, et cetera, and exactly what the zoning is. So it is not yet a complete application. And if it was to be approved, I'd like to define what it's going to be approved as. If it is approved as a nightclub, then that will establish what the parking ratio will be. It would not be assembly, it would fall under nightclub, and it could change a lot of things here. So there's, there's more to this down the road that will need to be done and Mr. Ashenbacher has already touched on that.
Okay, all right.
So I'd like to ask Mr. Lang if, when we close and discuss, are we going to be going through the findings?
No.
Or is this merely a discussion as to whether the decision of the former zoning officer was correct or incorrect?
Yeah, it's really just a question again of saying, does this, you know, as the application has been described, does it fit one of these, you know, allowed uses? And if not, is it of the same general character as one of these?
That's any of the two.
So then you would just have a vote on whether to, to grant the permit or not.
All right, we really are going to close the floor. Okay, all right. So let's see what you all think. And I'm going to actually start by saying what I think. I think that language does matter and I think that definitions can be broad, but they have to be attended to. And I, in my opinion, when you say entertainment, that is a category. It doesn't say that every entertainment in the world can be put in this space. It says, here is a category of entertainment that could be allowed. That is to say, and that's indicated by the dashes, they're acting exactly as a colon would act, which says, what follows here explains entertainment. It is, in my opinion, as Mr. Lang has suggested, limiting language. Those dashes are not there for no reason. And what follows that could be allowed would be nightclubs, theaters, billiard parlors, and the other things that are named here. So the question for me then becomes, how do you define a nightclub? Is a strip club the same thing as a nightclub? Is a theater the same thing in common parlance as a strip club? Are there, are there differences here? And words have meaning, because again, sometimes these meanings can be extended, but they're not all inclusive all the time. So I maintain that yes, the entertainment proposed is entertainment, but here, entertainment is a category and the specifics of that category are named. Nightclubs, theaters, et cetera.
Well, I had questions with the statement under 230407B3, general business zones. And it says principally permitted uses and used primarily as regularly in the B2D zones except as herein modified in the following general conditions. You go down to number six, commercial recreation, at least 200 feet from any zone. What is commercial recreation?
I would suggest that it might be that billiard parlor or pool hall or bowling alley, but I have no idea.
Well, if you look at under definitions in the code for recreation facilities.
Okay.
A place designated and equipped for the conduct of sports and leisure time activities, which I believe would include all these entertainment opportunities and also sports, which is not mentioned here.
Okay.
And in a B3 zone, following from section A, except as hereinafter modified in the following general condition, that entertainment under commercial recreation as defined under B3 requires 200 feet.
Exactly.
And I think that that's what I'm finding after reviewing all of this.
Okay, so you're, you're talking about the 200 feet.
I am talking about the 200 feet and I'm sure they had a reason for that.
Okay, all right, good point. What else do you want to say here?
Well, the word similar has come up quite often. So we also need to consider, I believe, if it's similar entertainment to the ones that are also listed behind the commas.
Comments on that?
When reviewing the old minutes, we're talking assembly hall, adult entertainment, no fruit or alcohol. So we're congregating without fruit or alcohol and the only equipment we have are stationary booths. So I don't know if it would be a nightclub. I don't think there'd be a theater.
Well, I brought some definitions of nightclub from several different places. The first one is from Wikipedia, which everybody may know about. Wikipedia is an encyclopedia and it allows common people, you, me, whoever, to add on to and modify definitions. So this is apparently a commonly used definition at the moment of nightclub. It says, "A nightclub, also known as a discotheque or simply a club or disco, is an entertainment venue which usually operates late into the night." Therefore nightclub. "A nightclub is generally distinguished from bars, pubs, or taverns by the inclusion of a dance floor and a DJ booth where a DJ plays recorded dance, hip-hop, rock, reggae, and popular music." If you don't like that definition, here is one from the Merriam-Webster's dictionary. "A nightclub is a place of entertainment, usually serving food and liquor and providing music for dancing." I take that to be the patrons who are attending, not the entertainment. "And often having a floor show." Floor shows typically are people doing some dancing and perhaps singing, who knows, even juggling. "Nightclub," from the free dictionary, which is a part of the American Heritage Dictionary, says, "A nightclub is an establishment that stays open late at night and provides food, drink, entertainment, and music for dancing." That is the patrons. Here is a definition from the Oxford English Dictionary, which was recently revised. "It is the most inclusive dictionary that exists for the English language." They say, "It is a club or similar establishment that is open at night, usually for drinking, dancing, and other entertainment. And in later use, specifically, a club with a bar or discotheque, meaning dancing for the patrons." Here's a definition from the free dictionary for strip club. It's very short. "A club offering entertainment in the form of a striptease." Here's another definition from Longman's Dictionary of Contemporary English Online. "Strip club is a place where people go to see performers who take off their clothes in a sexually exciting way. So in either case, do they have to offer anything else?" Here's one more, same thing, okay. Here's a definition of theater, which is also included in our code. "A building designed for the performance of plays, operas, et cetera. Two, a large room or hall usually with raised seats for an audience, used for lectures, film shows, et cetera. Could be a medical theater, meaning an operating room." There are also definitions for the theater of war. Here's one that pertains to us. "Performing arts theater, plays regarded collectively as a form of art or writing that is suitable for dramatic presentation." So I take these definitions fairly seriously. They're somewhat similar and I don't see the strip club falling in the same category as either the theater or nightclub by definition. That's just my opinion. Comments? Questions? Other discussion? Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Kranowski.
Uh, no.
Ms. LeBeau?
Yes.
Mr. Dolphy?
No.
Miss? Yes, you. Ms. Striegel, thank you, Ms. Striegel.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt your questions. And I suppose we just got ahead and finished the vote, but we should actually, Mr. Mergenthaler points on, I think, makes a standing point that we should have four votes for the four different applications, so.
Okay, all right, so let's begin again. Let's see our different applications there. See if I can locate them. I'm not even sure how to locate them. That's a good point. Okay, great, okay.
There's four, Pat.
No, there only three.
There are three.
Okay, so first case, 08081, you know the address, 1113 West Stimson, Zone B3, Three White Entertainment. "Requesting an administrative review by the board regarding the decision of the zoning administration to deny establishment of an adult theater." Okay.
I need to vote on the approval of an adult theater.
Okay, so let's start again. Ms. Kranowski, how do you vote for an adult theater?
No.
I vote no.
And no.
No. Okay, and I also vote no. The first one, the adult theater. The second one is case 08091, or I, I guess that's an I. Zone B3, Three White Entertainment, is the appellant requesting an administrative review by the board regarding the decision of the administrator, zoning administrator, to deny establishment of an adult entertainment business at the reference location. Ms. Kranowski?
No.
Yes.
No.
No. Okay, and I also vote no. Case 0801I, that's odd. 1113 West Stimson Avenue, Zone B3, Three White Entertainment, Appellant. Appellant is requesting an administrative review by the board regarding the decision of the zoning administrator to deny establishment of an adult nightclub at the reference location. Ms. Kranowski?
No.
Ms. LeBeau?
No.
No.
Ms. Striegel, no, and I also vote no. So now the administrative, now the last one.
Now we have to do the administrative review.
Okay, so given our votes, how do you vote on the administrative review? The question here-
Yeah, okay.
Do you need me on this, Mr. Mergenthaler?
07250 was private club assembly hall.
I don't see that.
That was the very first one that would have been done on the original application.
On the original application?
For the interpretation. If you have three, you did, the ones that were in May.
Let's see if we can find that for ourselves. And Ms. LeBeau can help us.
I don't think we have. I don't think we do.
07250.
Okay, do you have a piece of paper from these two?
There's this.
Okay.
It's in here.
Okay. I don't know.
These are the private club assembly hall.
Okay, so let's see if we can stop that doing. Well, I just lost it, okay. So the appellant is requesting an administrative review by the board regarding a decision of the zoning administrator to deny establishment of an, help me, assembly-
Private club.
Private club assembly hall.
Assembly hall, yeah.
Okay. At the reference location, which is 1113 West Stimson Avenue in Zone B3, Three White Entertainment, Appellant. So, Ms. Kranowski, how do you vote for that?
No.
No. No.
No, also no. Okay. So in the thing that we are actually asked to review, do you, let's see, how do you vote in whether or not the zoning administrator was, okay, here's the question. Was the zoning administrator correct to deny the establishment of adult theater entertainment business, adult nightclub? That's what we are reviewing, his decision. Was he correct in that decision?
To deny it.
To deny. Was he correct to deny this?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we have upheld the decision of the zoning administrator and I hope we have complied with Judge Ward and the appeals court in addressing the issue as to whether it fits the definition. Now we need to look at whether, that's the next thing, we have to vote again, I suppose on all three of them again. Okay. Having voted no, that it does not fit the principally permitted use by definition, we need to see if it's in the same general character as a principally permitted use for B3 or B2 zone. So is it in the same general character as things that are allowed in the zone? Do you want to speak to that?
Well, I think we've discussed pretty much already things that are similar, things that may be allowable.
I would just ditto that.
Okay. So you think we addressed the recre, commercial recreation and various other things? Okay, so is this in the same general character as a principally permitted use in B3 or B2D zone? Ms. Kranowski?
No.
Yes.
No.
No. I also vote no. So we can ask Mr. Lang if there's anything else we need to do here.
You've already voted individually on each of the four applications.
Yes, yes, okay. So in that case, we should proceed to any other business that we have here tonight. Yes, we need to take care of the minutes. Who has read the minutes and do you have any corrections or additions to these minutes?
I've read the minutes.
Okay.
I remember that we-
Okay, I'm in favor of the mission. Okay, we are adjourned.